Welcome. This is the July 6, 2023, meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission, back from recess. I'm Jim Lantelme, a member of the commission. I am here again. Our chair is participating remotely and has asked me to continue on as chair as we authorized on Monday. This is the planning commission's second public hearing scheduled for this month, and tonight we will be hearing the following items. 4600 Fairfax Drive Site Plan and Ordinances of Vacation Associated with the site. Second, an ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify the Arlington County zoning ordinance regarding food, space, and establishments. After that, we have some housekeeping items for the planning commission that we will also be hearing. First, I have to share a few of the logistical points for our virtual participants and the commissioners who are participating remotely. Tonight's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon FiOS Channels 39 and 40, and the county's website. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect to us by phone. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you are called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference, and please keep your cameras off until the clerk calls on you to speak. When called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is located on your meeting team's command bar. The moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Once you have spoken, please turn your cameras off. If you are dialing in by phone, press star six to unmute. Public speakers, you will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at tonight's hearing was required. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. Speakers will have two minutes to comment as an individual and three minutes to comment as a representative of an organization or a county board-appointed advisory group. A timer will be displayed on the screen when speaking virtually. Speakers in person will follow the timer on the podium. If you're dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide you an audible 30-second warning. You will be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comments, questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted on the county's website. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Now on to the agenda items. Madam Clerk, can you please call tonight's first item?
Our first item for the evening will begin with item number five on the agenda, the consideration of the following actions for the 4600 Fairfax Drive Site Plan application. We have this in two parts, SPLN 21-00008, and the ordinance of vacation to a parcel of land in that area. We have Adam Watson here, our planning staff, to present this item this evening.
Welcome, Mr. Watson. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner Lantelme. Good evening. This is the 4600 Fairfax Drive, otherwise known as the Boston Holiday Inn Site Plan and the associated items. So the first item that I'll speak about is the site plan amendment to the existing Site Plan 57, followed by three related actions for this ordinance of vacation to allow for area to be used for density purposes. So to begin, this site is located just west of the Boston Metro Station at 4600 and 4610 Fairfax Drive, across from the new Boston Wetland Park. This, just a little bit of background here, this site has a general land use plan or GLUP designation of medium office apartment hotel, and the site is zoned entirely CO2.5 mixed use district. There's no proposed changes to the GLUP designation or the zoning district here, and both are in alignment with each other. As I mentioned a minute ago, this is for Site Plan 57, which was originally approved back in 1967 to allow for the construction of the existing Arlington Center Building, Office Building to the south side of the site, and the Holiday Inn Hotel on the north side of the site along Fairfax Drive. In terms of the applicant's proposal, it's to expand the site area by approximately 4,000 square feet and redevelop the site with three new multifamily residential buildings, as shown here on the image on the right-hand side of the screen. Building one is a multifamily building that's seven stories tall with 420 units. Buildings two and three, two to the north and three to the south, are triplex-style multifamily buildings. Both are four stories and each have 15 units for a total of 30 units for Buildings two and three combined. In terms of parking, the overall parking ratio for this site would be a .92 spaces per dwelling unit. However, I think it's important to understand that the buildings are essentially bifurcated in terms of parking, so Building one has its own underground parking garage, which is accessed, can only be accessed off of a driveway parallel to Fairfax Drive, and will be parked at a ratio of .91 spaces per dwelling unit. Buildings two and three have individual garages, so a parking ratio of one space per dwelling unit. However, there is an additional tandem carport behind that space, so the effective ratio is really two spaces per dwelling unit. The applicant will also be constructing and providing a public access easement for a new 12-foot-wide shared-use path that runs north-south through the site and fulfills the MTP recommendation for the West Boston Connection, which we'll talk more about in a minute. They're going to be constructing this new road and alley which allows for access to the Building one loading docks and as well access to the garages, the individual garages for Buildings two and three, and is also there for emergency vehicle purposes. There's the emergency egress onto Fairfax Drive for fire trucks and emergency vehicles only. Lastly, there are a number of zoning modifications associated with this, which includes additional density, reduced parking and loading, and density exclusions for below-grade mechanical space and storage space. In terms of the vacations associated, again, this is all area to be incorporated, or excuse me, used for density purposes for the site plan, and that involves vacating a portion of utilities easements and fire lane easements, which you can see labeled on this image, and then a portion of this outlaw B, this cul-de-sac here at the bottom or the south side of the site. Moving on to our analysis of this proposal in terms of our regulations and policies, so moving sort of general to specific here, GLUP Note 23 actually applies to the site adjacent to this, to the PEC Staples Site immediately east. However, we did feel it was appropriate for the applicant to follow the guidance provided in that note, which speaks to having appropriate transitions in building heights as you step down from the core of Boston to lower-density neighborhoods to the west. In terms of zoning, this site, as I mentioned, is Zone CO2.5. It allows multifamily residential buildings such as these up to 115 dwelling units per acre as base density and then a maximum height of 16 stories. The Boston Sector Plan from 1980 has no site-specific guidance for this site. The existing site plan preceded the adoption of the Sector Plan, and as you can see from the illustrative plan here on the right-hand side of the screen, the site is shown with existing conditions as it is today. However, it is an area, or was identified as, an area of transition to these lower-density neighborhoods, and transitions, you know, should be accomplished through building heights, tapering, landscaping, buffering, et cetera, along similar lines, as I mentioned, for GLUP Note 23. Lastly, in terms of our master transportation plan, there were a couple different policies within individual elements that we were looking at with regard to this in terms of maintaining and enhancing the grid-style network, trying to reduce storm-water runoff by minimizing the creation of additional impermeable areas, and then, again, the West Boston connection from the bicycle element in terms of being able to connect riders north-south, essentially from Wilson up to the Custis Trail, which is on the other side of Fairfax, or over to the Blumenton Junction Trail. This project went through a substantial evolution as we went through the SPRC process. The image on the left-hand side starts with the online engagement design and then moves through SPRC III to our current design. And just to highlight a few of the things that improved along the way, first, I'd point out again this 12-foot-wide shared-use path that fulfills that bicycle element recommendation I just mentioned. You'll note that on the original online engagement proposal, that was substantially smaller, much more narrow space that was located on the east side of the building, sort of up against the property line. We're having an improved building height taper as we move to the western edge of this site, which we'll speak more to in a minute. We're getting sidewalks and streetscapes along both sides of the new road, which was not part of the original proposal. They eliminated the surface parking area that was in the southwest corner of the site, again, reducing impervious surface area there, better preserving the trees in that area and providing a better buffer to the neighborhood to the south and to the west. Enlarged landscape area along Fairfax Drive and widened that existing sidewalk, which is about five to six feet wide currently to 12 feet. I would also add, I didn't put it on here, but just in terms of reducing the number of curb cuts in half from, I think it's four today, down to two. And then lastly, 11 and a half percent net reduction in impervious surface over the existing development. So in terms of our zoning and policy compliance, this proposal does meet the zoning ordinance requirements, including for land use and for building height. We think it furthers the goals of the Sector Plan and the GLUP in terms of having this appropriate building height transition, which is illustrated on the contextual site elevation at the top of the screen, showing how you're stepping down from the much taller 12-story office building to the east and then down to seven stories with the multifamily down to four, with the triplexes, and then ultimately on the western edge there with the single-family homes. It also furthers the goals of the MTP and the Stormwater Management Plan. Again, shared-use path, which is shown here in section, the expanded sidewalk and trail along Fairfax Drive. We're looking at a reduced number of peak-hour vehicle trips for both AM and PM, and then again, reduced impervious surface area. This is a side-by-side illustration, I think, that highlights some of the positive changes in terms of the public realm, looking at existing conditions versus proposed. So left-hand side of the screen, we are standing on North Woodrow Street, looking north, essentially at a parking structure and the two taller towers that exist today. With the proposed condition, again, we would have, you know, a multi-use trail through this site and also have a lower-density residential use along that path as well. On the right-hand side of the screen, well, we're on Fairfax Drive, looking south, and you can see the existing portico shared today and the number of curb cuts that are there. So this is a substantial improvement in terms of widening that sidewalk, adding landscaping and plantings there, where I should again mention there is existing utilities easement that prevents the building from being located any closer to Fairfax Drive than it's currently proposed. So making good use of that space for public amenities. In terms of community benefits, the applicant is requesting additional density for fulfilling our green building incentive policy at the legal 2.5 FAR level. That includes 20% energy optimization, post-occupancy Energy Star score of at least 75, and then, again, all the prerequisites that are in that policy, which I would just name a few, include bird-friendly materials and EV parking for 4% of the spaces and 15% EV-ready spaces. In terms of community engagement, we had our online engagement almost a year ago, back in July of 2022 into August. We had three SPRC meetings, which is one additional meeting in terms of what we typically have for a site plan of this nature. The first one was dedicated to discussing this revised conceptual layout that I showed with the online engagement, and then we moved into our typical topics for SPRC II and III. In terms of commission meetings, this was considered by Transportation Commission on the 29th and was recommended for unanimous approval per the county manager's recommendation at a vote of nine to zero. Just briefly, I would like to just run down some of the findings of our goals and objectives here. I've highlighted many of these already in the presentation, but again, this project would deliver a new multi-use trail fulfilling our West Boston connection, a much-improved streetscape, especially along Fairfax Drive, which is also used by a number of different users, whether it's pedestrians or cyclists, sustainable building design, reduced impervious surface area to further our master transportation plan and our storm-water master plan goals, improved building heights transitions in terms of having building heights that, again, taper from essentially Glebe Road down to the west, new housing. This definitely supports our GLUP development and growth goals in terms of creating more housing in a transit-rich, multimodal neighborhood such as Boston, and then again, reducing the overall number of vehicle trips to and from the site. Our recommendation is to adopt the Site Plan Amendment Ordinance and then find that the ordinance of vacation here are substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. We can now turn to the applicant.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Kathy Puskar with Walsh Clucci, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I have with me at the table Andrea Gerhart. I also have Mary Beth Avedizian and the rest of our consultant team with me this evening. Mr. Watson did such a good job summarizing all the technical things. I'm going to try and show you a little bit more of the site and the architecture. Next. Just to orient you, I'm sure everybody knows where this Holiday Inn and Office Building is, but it's always good to have a contextual site to show you where we are in relation to our neighbors, to the south and the west, those single-family residents, and then, of course, our larger mixed-use buildings to the east of us and to the north. Next. Once again, some existing site photos of the lovely Office Building and Holiday Inn. I would reiterate that this is Site Plan 57, approved in 1967, so it's been here for quite a long time, a lot of surface parking lot, outdated buildings, and so we are very eager to move forward with that. Here's an aerial that just shows you pretty much that this site has a lot of surface parking, structured parking, Office Building, Holiday Inn, and then a disconnected relationship to our neighbors to the south, as you see that cul-de-sac and kind of the hammerhead for emergency vehicles. So here is our proposed site plan. Mr. Watson spent some time showing you kind of where we started and where we are now. I have to say, we really loved that first version, and so I was hoping he wasn't going to talk about that, but we are very proud of where we are today because I think it is a testament to my client and our entire team that we were responsive to the comments that we did here at SPRC. Despite some painful cuts and changes, we listened, and this is why we have such a good plan in front of you this evening, is because of, I think, the efforts of our team, but also the efforts of the community, the SPRC, and staff. And so I'll get into a little bit of exactly what we're looking at, but of course, we have the Site Plan Amendment and the ordinance of vacation, but we're showing the new multifamily building and triplexes, but really, the story of this site is this connectivity vehicular, pedestrian, bicycle, so we're going to get into that in a moment. I think Mr. Watson went over a lot of the technical details, and you can see here the height, the square footage, the unit counts, and parking. We are doing the Point 2.5 Green Building Incentive Program commitment, and we also have a base affordable housing contribution, payment for the vacation, public art, utilities fund contributions. Moving to the multifamily building, this is our ground floor level of that building, and if you see, if you're up at Fairfax Drive, we have oriented all of our amenity uses, our main entrance, along Fairfax Drive, and on the far west-left side of this slide, you'll see that we've located our bike room there, which makes it very proximate to the shared path for easy access onto and off of that trail into the Blumenton Trail. You'll also see on the right our parking entrance, and I'm going to get into that a little bit more. We have walkout units along the new road, and we also have walkout units both on the multifamily building here, and then we'll get to the triplex. Moving to the triplex units, this is a new concept. It does qualify as multifamily because unlike a townhouse where you have a single-party wall from the ground floor up to the roof, here you'll see that when you get to the second floor, that's actually the second, that is a unit pretty much on that floor with stairs to the other two units above. And so it does qualify as multifamily, but we just thought it might be helpful for people to understand when we say "triplex," why we're saying that, and also why it qualifies as a multifamily unit. So moving to the next page and looking at circulation, and I think this is where we really worked hard to achieve a good plan that met the goals of the community and the county. You can see our vehicular circulation along Fairfax Drive. That circulation, the entrance there, is for the parking to the multifamily building, so all those units, 420 units, are being accessed off of Fairfax Drive. We also have an area for emergency vehicle access and then those short-term drop-off pickups. If we go to the south, you'll see that we now have a street grid where we have actually connected Woodrow, Wakefield, and the new street to provide access that connects those two streets with the new street of this development. We have loading on the south side of this building. That loading, if you recall, is only for move-in, move-outs for the residential multifamily and for trash pickup. And then, of course, we have alley access to get you to Buildings two and three. But more importantly is the focus on bicycles and pedestrians, and you can see the connections through the site and the connection along Fairfax Drive from Blumenton Trail to the east. And I like to do the before and after as well. This is where we are today, and here's where we're taking you in the future. In this particular instance, we have closed curb cuts along Fairfax Drive. That being said, we do need to retain some access for fire department access, and so you'll see, we worked with staff to figure out, how do we make that accessible for fire trucks and ambulances but not encourage other vehicles to be there? And so the result, number one, to make it not appear to be a curb cut was to do a paver treatment. We also did bollards with a locked fence so that only emergency vehicles can access that area. And then moving farther east on Fairfax Drive, you can see where we consolidated two curb cuts into one to address Fairfax Drive, and then we also have a right-out-only on that eastern curb cut. We have increased the size of that sidewalk from approximately six feet with no meaningful buffer on either side and to a 12-foot shared-use path with landscaping on both sides. And we worked hard to plant trees. We are working with staff. We have a number of existing utilities in that area, so we will continue to make sure to provide as many as we can while not having any conflicts with as many as we can while not having any conflicts with those utilities. Next. Now we're going to go to the south, and here's what it looks like on the south side of that building today, and here's the development for the future. And you'll see, as I mentioned, we have the connection to the neighborhood to the south. We've included stop signs, bike sharrows, sidewalks, and all of this will allow the community to come through the property and use that shared-use path to connect to Fairfax Drive and the Bluemont Trail. Speaking of the shared-use path, this is a very sizable area between the multifamily units and the triplexes. As I mentioned before, we've got a lot of eyes on the street because we have access at the ground level for all of the units in those multifamily buildings until you get up to the corner where we have our bike room, and then, of course, the triplexes have direct access to that. You'll also note that in front of the triplexes, they have their own lead walk and sidewalk so as not to conflict with the shared-use path, although the shared-use path is for pedestrians and bicyclists. We also have landscaping on either side of that to make it a really nice space. In terms of landscaping, we have, we do, we have done our best to retain as many trees as we can on the west to our neighbors, and we've actually enhanced that buffer, the perviousness, by six feet away from those neighbors. You will see some trees that do necessarily need to be removed. You'll also see trees that we've added throughout the site. I know there were questions previously about our plant list and what we'll be planting, and I have a statement to read that I've been given from our landscape consultant because they know these things better than I. And just let me speak to that by saying, "The plant list represents plants native to Northern Virginia and were selected by soil moisture, light exposure, and location so that they are well-suited to the microclimates of an urban landscape. The site conditions vary widely from full sun exposure beside roads, bioretention planters, or areas under the shade of trees. The varying colors and plant typologies aim to create a dynamic landscape for users of the space and will also serve a greater purpose in supporting the local wildlife." So that's what the focus has been on land design, who has been working on our landscape. Next. And I also wanted to focus a little bit of stormwater management because that was a lot of conversation we had with the community, concerns about stormwater management. And so this is just listing those things that we are doing on-site to improve and address stormwater management, and you'll see that we're upsizing pipes, adding underground detention, doing bioretention planters, reducing impervious surface, and adding green roof. Next. And here's some images that'll help you better understand the project, and I thought this one was good because it does show you that transition to our single-family neighbors as we go from the single-family homes to the triplexes, to the multifamily, and to the neighboring building along Glebe Road. Here's an image at the entrance to the parking, looking at the west-northwest corner of the multifamily building along Fairfax Drive. You can see that double row of trees lining the shared-use path and the signage indicating that that is exit-only. Next. And here we are at the northwest corner of the building, so this is showing you the access to the shared-use path and that corner of our multifamily building. And just going around to the rear of the building, this is the southwest corner of the multifamily building as you are coming from Woodrow into the shared-use path. And along the shared-use path, this is the entrance where you can see both the multifamily and the triplexes as vehicles, once again, go through towards Fairfax Drive. A little closer up, where you can see the walk-up units in the multifamily and how generous those setbacks are with landscaping both sides of that shared-use trail. This is the architecture of those walk-up units, and you can see the distance of those units from that shared-use path, and, once again, the sidewalk that runs adjacent to their proposal. And that is the end of our presentation. We look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we move on to public speakers. Do we have public speakers tonight, Madam Clerk?
We certainly do. I will call out the names. If you all could be present, the first person is Mark Greenwood. Thank you, Mr. Greenwood.
Press the button on the microphone, please.
The button.
There you go.
Now it's on.
You can make it taller, too.
What's that?
You can make it taller.
The whole podium. Push the button, and the whole thing goes up.
Right there. Right.
Ah.
Good evening. I'm Mark Greenwood, appearing here on behalf of the Climate Change, Energy, and Environment Commission. I'm here to provide the commission's perspective and how this project serves the county's energy and environmental objectives. Under the criteria developed by the commission, this project was scored at 60%. While this is a relatively low score, the applicant has taken some positive steps that we think are worth recognition. I'm going to cite them as I go through my comments. The commission emphasizes building electrification because it is essential to achieving carbon neutrality. This applicant has committed to important electrification steps, most significantly for its HVAC systems. There are two areas, however, where we hope they can do more. The most recent energy report for the project indicates that gas cooking ranges will be installed in the triplex homes. We urge the applicant to opt for all-electric cooking appliances as induction cooking is becoming more popular and available. In addition, scientific research has documented the gas stoves emit hazardous air pollutants such as nitrogen dioxide and benzene, which is a known human carcinogen. Second, the report indicates a current intent to use central gas-fired condensing boilers for hot water in the multifamily apartment building. Consisting with the report's conclusions that heat pumps reduce greenhouse gas emissions compared to gas-fired boilers, we urge them to select the heat pump option. We have also recommended this project install EV charges in the garages of the townhomes, as well as an EV-ready electrical system for 50% of the parking spaces in the multifamily apartment building. We believe these steps are warranted in light of the strong push for EV vehicles in the automobile industry and the support for this trend from the new federal tax incentives for our buyers. Finally, we offer a recommendation related to the site's stormwater strategy. The applicant has committed to a series of very constructive measures to control stormwater runoff from the site, including a detention vault, a green roof linked to bioremediation planters, and the replacement of an inadequate county's stormwater pipe. We believe that the applicant should also inform the neighbors and the public about the expected environmental results of these actions. For this purpose, we recommend that the applicant consult with the experts in the county's stormwater program to prepare a public, user-friendly explanation about the amount of stormwater that will be retained or detained on the site from the intended stormwater measures and how those actions mitigate the amount of stormwater likely to fall on the site during a serious storm. And with that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Our next speaker is virtual, Mr. Bernie Byrne. Mr. Byrne, do you want to mute? Unmute yourself.
Hello. This project lacks biophilia. Although the roof has a few plantings, there is no green roof despite what the person just said. No, it's all pavement and whatever, a few plantings. No plats hanging from the roofs or balconies or climbing from the ground or ledges. The project evotes too little space to pollinate a habitat and a poor bicycle transportation plan. The activity should not follow the grant or its density for any such projects. The landscape plan does not show the species and locations and shrubs round covered as perennials. I have asked the applicant to provide these. The applicant has, and the lack of our land design, have intentionally denied the public the opportunity to review this information. Beast and monocot of a vibration is greatly falling. General publications state that the required migration depends upon the sustenance of common milkweed except the Sariaca. The county board's monarch pledge encourages planters of milkweed and other native plants that support monarchs and other pollinators. Despite that, the landscape plan does not presently show any new weed. It doesn't show any plant of that nature. All unpaved open spaces and tree trenches should contain common milkweed and other pollinator plants. There should be few wind-pollinated ornamental grasses and no mowed ones. You can see a lot of ornamental grass in those pictures. They're not going to help pollinate very much. The north-south shared-use path does not connect to major streets or the trails in the south end. It will receive very little use. To comply with recommendations of bicycle element, to reduce impervious sustenance and to increase pollinator habitat, the applicant must reduce the width of the path from 12 feet to 8 feet. A 26-foot access road to the west side of the site parallels the path. The road dead-ends its north end and connects to ridley-used neighboring streets to the south end. The road will have little traffic. Speedy science, if allowed, speedy cyclists will use this road if they learn the route. Pedestrians and leisure cyclists.
Thank you, Dr. Byrne. Your time is up.
Use the path or the redundant paved walkway in the triplex. Use that road, the access road.
Your time is up, Mr. Byrne. Thank you very much.
And put signage toward it. Thank you.
Do we have any further speakers, Madam Clerk?
Yes, our last speaker is David Colino. Yes, he should be on the line.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. My name is David Colino. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Boston Park HOA, Homeowners Association, which is just south of the proposed site. We had two issues that we wanted to bring up. The first one being related to the construction. Obviously, this is a big project with the demolition and then construction of the new buildings. We wanted to make sure that, you know, most, hopefully, most of the construction traffic goes through the Fairfax Drive, which doesn't have a residential neighborhood there. We're hoping that the streets south of the site, which do have a lot of residents and neighbors, do not get affected by construction traffic such as idling or moving debris, pollution noise, especially because a lot of young kids live on those streets. And then the second one is really, I mean, we know that there's been a lot of changes in the project. Building 1, obviously, is a typical, you know, apartment block with, I presume, optional parking spaces that will go into Fairfax Drive with a clear exit there. But Buildings 2 and 3, the triplexes, they come with parking lots, so the units will be coming with parking, so we presume that the tenants that will be interested in those units will have cars. So we're thinking, we're talking about potentially 60 cars coming that way that will not have an exit on Fairfax Drive. So we're really worried about increasing traffic on those Woodrow and Wakefield streets. We know that the applicant did submit a traffic study, impact study, but the assumptions and the conclusions on that study were really unreliable. Basically, out of those 60 cars, it's assuming that only six additional projects will be done in the morning and the afternoon, which makes no sense. Just one car will only, each car will only be used once every two weeks according to the traffic study. So this is not necessarily about the applicant, but I think the county should think better about how those streets, those exits for Buildings 2 and 3 will work, especially given that some of those exits, Wakefield to Wilson, already has a score.
Thank you. Your time is up now. And that's our final speaker. Thank you. And any other commissions who would like to speak? I will then, it had to be, it had to be previously registered.
I just thought it was 24 hours.
Madam Clerk, that is...
It's 24 hours before the original night of the meeting.
Unfortunately, 24 hours before Monday's meeting. That's when, because this is a continuation of that meeting.
Correct.
So my apologies, but that's the way we handle it. You can send in written comments, please do. Okay, then they are part of the record then. Thank you.
Is there a way to send this to the commission?
It can be forwarded to all of us. I'll ask staff to send on your comments to all of us. Thank you. I will talk about the Transportation Commission, which met on this last Thursday night, and we did vote 9 to 0 to recommend approval of this. Discussion, not surprising, did revolve around, a lot around the improved bicycle facilities here, that there is, that there will not be a dead end on either of the two residential streets to the south, which will mean that any traffic coming from the triplexes will be shared there. We did look at the traffic from traffic analyses, and there seems to be actually less traffic generated by this than what the existing uses, both the office building and the hotel, had generated in the past. And of course, as mentioned, all of the apartment building traffic for the residents will be off of Fairfax Drive. Deliveries to the loading dock will be off the south streets. We are happy with, we were happy with the improved bicycle facilities, the pedestrian facilities, recognizing that there were tremendous improvements on this project over the course of the three SPRCs. And as I mentioned, ultimately, the Transportation Commission voted 9 to 0 to recommend approval. Let's see. And we have an SPRC report, which I'll also do. First, I do want to thank former Commissioner Stephen Hughes, who shepherded this through the process pretty much all the way to the end until he left the commission last month. I did chair one of the three SPRCs, but he really took a laboring oar, so I definitely thank him for working on this all the way through. I did send it around earlier, but to just remind, we did have, as mentioned, three full meetings for this with substantial changes from each of the, between each of the SPRCs. There was an interest and question why additional height wasn't being requested here because theoretically this site would have supported additional height. The economics of stick-built and, of course, a lot of the underground utilities there pretty much made the decision why the applicant is deciding to keep the heights low here. The, having the triplexes be the only ones that are accessible to the south was a nod to the neighborhood concerns so that the bulk of the people living on this overall site will be entering and exiting off of Fairfax Drive. The fire access, as mentioned earlier, will be coming off of Fairfax also. There does continue, as you saw, continue to be some concern from the neighborhood about the traffic flow and that fire access. There are a little bit of infringements along the west side of the property by existing homeowners there, which the applicant has worked out with those homeowners, so that is an issue that has been resolved. And there will be attempts to minimize tree canopy loss, as seen by the applicant's presentation. Those, some of them are already dead, and it's, so there will be improvements there. If trees don't survive, the applicant has committed to the following, the standard tree replacement procedures. Areas of discussion we have right here are site constraints, the easement areas and the stormwater overland relief along the west, resident access and flow to the various units, the pedestrian-bicycle experience, phasing, how there will be continued access for pedestrians and bikes during construction coming off the Bluemont Trail. Again, traffic flow or issues. For design, there were some questions still about the triplexes and community benefits, certainly environmental. We heard some from C2E2, bird-friendly glass, embedded carbon, reuse, affordable housing also. Are there any other issues that any of the commission members would like to add as discussion items? Not seeing any. I think at this point, it is now with the commission. So anybody have questions or clarifying questions for either staff or the applicant here? Yes. Commissioner Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For either the, well, first, let me say that I was impressed with the For either the, well, first, let me say that I was impressed with the comments that Mr. Greenwood made. Uh, for purposes of full disclosure, he's a much esteemed former colleague from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, uh, so I take his remarks very seriously, and, um, I have one question about the, um, stormwater retention for either the county staff or the, or the applicant. Can you tell me what the size of the stormwater retention, uh, facility is onsite? Does anybody know?
I'm going to call up our expert.
I can look up the.
This is Karen White, our engineer.
And here's, here's the concern, um, whatever it is, it's not big enough. Now, I'm not sure there's anything we can do about it at this point. The reason I think it's not big enough is because, um, I'll, I'll give you an example. The, the stormwater retention site at the Cardinal Elementary School, four million gallons underground. I took a tour of the site. It's incredibly impressive. And when I asked the staff how, uh, large a storm that would have come, now, obviously, it, it, it drains a bigger area than this facility does. I recognize that. They said this will be good for a 10-year storm. Well, today's, you know, 10-year storm is going to be every week's storm, you know, in a few years with the way climate change is going. Uh, and, um, uh, and given the flooding problems that Arlington County has, I'm really concerned with our ability to deal with stormwater issues, but I forgive me for talking over your answer.
No, I'm Karen White with Walter Phillips, and I don't, I don't have the exact Cuban volume. I mean, it's in here. I don't know it off the top of my head, but we did design it for the 10-year storm, so I will answer that question.
All right. Then you've heard my concern. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you. Other questions or comments? Uh, yes, Commissioner Steinberger.
An apologies, I was unfortunately a little bit late to this. With regards to the, uh, concerns raised by C2E2 with regards to the readiness for electrical vehicle charging in the townhome portion, what is the plan for that? Because I, I do think, and even the renderings that you showed seem to show electric vehicles kind of circulating the site. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out what the plan is or how to have those ready-made, you know, what, what would be the impact? Is that like a post-built install? What are the options there?
Uh, so we are meeting the standard for those triplexes, which, uh, is two EV chargers and six EV-ready chargers. Um, I think that we are still looking at how to maintain flexibility to potentially allow other units to get EV-ready, uh, charging. Uh, but that's something that we have not figured out yet because, of course, you have to look at what that means in terms of your transformer size, um, and so we continue to just evaluate that, but we are committing to the minimum requirements.
Are you going to look to sell the triplexes or condos, or?
Correct.
Okay. Are you looking to do sales before they're built? Because if you do, that could be an option for the purchasers.
I, I believe that typically there would be pre-sales, so that is the question of can we figure out a way to, you know, offer it as an option for those who might want it?
Because these are all really easily, I mean, they're all identical units that if you have ability to do one, that means you have ability to do all of them, even if they're not installed right away, there should be the way to have them, the conduits there, um, the, the, the panel box large enough for, for that sort of thing. That shouldn't be that hard, that if it's okay for one, it should be able to be done for all of them, even if they're not installed right away. And I would strongly urge that that be done. That's a sales point, that this, especially, but I'm presuming the price points of these are going to be pretty breathtaking, um, that you'll want to have that there.
I just want to reiterate, um, I agree with everything Commissioner Lynn Tellamy said, and that was why I was asking the, the questions with regards to, I don't understand the sense of having it be an option for such a small amount of units when that's the direction we're heading in, and it seems like you've acknowledged that.
And of course, you know, for the, the big building, um, you know, wherever you can put additional conduits so it's ready for EVs, um, and, you know, the parking ratio is a little on the high side, you know, we approved that in TC, um, but if you turn out that you're not using as many spaces as you might need or you think you need, if some of that space could be converted to bicycle storage space, especially as bicycles are getting bigger because they're, you know, we have cargo bikes now, um, that presumably people could very well want and have those ready for charging. Um, you know, again, the price points for this, this apartment building are not going to be low. This is an amenity I think people are going to be expecting in the future, and the more flexibility you have to accommodate that, the more marketable the building is. I, you know, we're advocating for you with things that'll make your building more marketable. It isn't just, you know, good stuff. It's, it's also something that we think the way the market is going. Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Sarley.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I envision a future where, um, cars that are not electric will not be allowed into the garages, and then we can cut all that venting and all that infrastructure that goes with that, but that's a bit of a dream for now. My comment is related to demolition, a little bit along the veins of E2C2. I would request that the applicant look into any and every possibilities of reusing and repurposing the equipment that's, or the systems, hardware, anything that we can on the two existing building structures. I know they're old, but I'm sure they've been refurbished in the past few years, and I know that a lot of that equipment can be reused and repurposed. It's a bit of work and effort to transport and find a, a place to put it, but I think that would go a long way on the environmental impact, and that's just my request. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Sarley. Um, yes, Commissioner Striner.
Yes, so first off, I'd like to, is this good? Okay. We had some noise complaints last time. I wasn't talking loud enough, um, but any rate, um, I'd like to associate myself with comments on EV chargers. I think it's something that's going to become increasingly relevant and expected in time. Um, and there's also a Tesla dealership, like, right down the street, so I could see the potential there. Um, but any rate, uh, when it comes to the, as a clarifying question, the entrance to the garage, was that pitched as a shared use path or was that just for cars?
No, just for, just for vehicles.
Okay, good, good. That seemed a little crowded. Um, and, let's see. And so, uh, addressing Mr. Colino's comments at the, during the public comment section, is it reasonable to assume that having, uh, exit points for Buildings Two and Three only spilling out onto Woodrow and Wakefield, is that, is that going to create, you know, a bunch of extra traffic in that residential neighborhood, or is it going to be a feasible way, uh, for those residents to get out, uh, of the building without having to go, or not having a direct access to Fairfax? Because that seemed to me like a sort of inconvenient way to get, um, around the area.
So, so our major focus was making sure that we kept that multifamily traffic away from those single-family residents, which is, uh, the successful solution I think we came up with, with having the multifamily garage access from Fairfax Drive. Regarding the triplexes, there are 30 triplexes, and I know it's hard for people to follow. They're like, how could there only be seven cars leaving? And I think what people are failing to focus on is that's the AM peak hour, and so what our final analysis showed is that in the AM peak hour, there are seven vehicles that will be leaving and two coming in, and then in the PM, it's the reverse. We expect two out and seven in. Um, and that is based on, uh, the traffic consultant's analysis based on ITE standards, right? And what we find is more and more people are working at home or have flex schedules, and so, uh, you know, could that peak be one more or one less, but over the course of an hour, it's a de minimis impact on the local neighborhood.
Right. Yeah, no, that makes sense, and as, as some of my fellow commissioners have mentioned, these are high price point, uh, residential, uh, buildings, so they're likely going to be hybrid or remote workers. So that, that does make sense to me. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I also want to mention about, C2E2 mentioned about the gas, uh, ranges in the triplexes. Um, again, the price points for this, if you put induction cooktops there, that's also a marketing plus, um, and it eliminates the need for running gas lines into those units. You know, that would be a cost-saving right there, um, and, you know, that could more than offset, I think, the somewhat higher cost of induction ranges. Those are, again, another thing that's a coming thing, and it is a marketing plus to have those. I mean, those, many people can sit to those almost to be luxury items, so, but it's still be cost-effective. Um, other, yeah, we're definitely clearly into sustainability here. Is there any other, um, bird-friendly glass, um, for the, uh, for the, for the multifamily building? Do we have bird-friendly glass issues? There isn't quite as much glass on this design as we've seen some other residential projects, um, you know, which is a positive. But what sort of provision do you have for using bird-friendly glass?
I don't have the specifics on that bird-friendly glass. I know that we spoke about it during SPRC. Do you know anything more that, can you add?
It's on. Sorry, thank you. Um, the architect is actually on the line if he, Chad, if you are able to chime in there. I know you've done some research on that, and there is more design to come to understand exactly how we will meet the requirement, but are committed to meeting it.
Hi, yes, I'm, I'm Chad Smith. I'm with HCM as the lead designer. Um, we haven't fully fleshed out our bird-friendly, um, glass approach yet, but we are working with SVP to determine the requirements for that, um, design. I know there's a certain frit that can be applied to the glass that, um, holds to a four-inch by four-inch square rule so that birds can see a, a frit pattern so they don't fly through it. So I think we'll be looking at strategies like that to implement in the class below a certain height range. I think it might have been 60 feet, uh, maybe 30 feet, um, but, so we're looking into that, into that, um, and we will implement a strategy so that we are bird-friendly.
Okay, thank you. Um, other environmental issues, sustainability issues? Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I'm wondering, I know one of our speakers tonight, uh, was concerned about local wildlife and pollinators. I know you mentioned that, um, you are going to have trees and plants that are native to Northern Virginia and contribute to the local wildlife, but can you tell us any more specificity about what that would look like or what that entails and how it would contribute to the local wildlife?
Yeah. Okay, we have our landscape consultant is also participating remotely. Gabby, are you able to answer that question?
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
I am, uh, thank you very much. And we have started to curate a plant palette that is takes inspiration from the Wedland Park across the street, which we feel is a very strong, uh, and direct relationship to our project. So first and foremost, we're just trying to not necessarily mimic because of the microclimate is a little different, but take inspiration and try to find a plant palette that not only provides seasonality, but also provides a plant, uh, design that has a structure that withstands kind of this, this environmental setting in a manner that even in the winter looks, uh, fabulous, uh, for the residents of the new project and the neighbors, and at the same time, you know, provides a wildlife support, you know, again, we're going to be a continuation of the corridor, you know, starting with the Wedland Park across the street. So, in, for the 4.1, we have cover our, um, requirements of canopy coverage. Uh, for the final landscape plan, we'll, obviously, we're going to be providing a full landscape plan. So we'll have a combination of all types of typologies of plants, evergreens, uh, for structure during the winter and, um, kind of a layering effect. We'll have a series of perennials that will be native to Northern Virginia. They will support, uh, pollinator and wild habitat corridors. We will have ornamental grasses that will also provide structure and support through, uh, winter months or other shoulder season months. Um, our strategy is always to layer our landscapes, so there's always, uh, seasonality, uh, places of interest and moments of wonder in our landscapes in the cities. So we're looking forward to develop a plan that actually supports, um, all of these concepts for the neighbors, for the residents, and for, like I said, urban wildlife. I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Bagley.
Yeah, I guess I must have missed something along the way. I just thought we were still on, um, clarifying questions and.
So, yeah, we sort of did move on, didn't we?
Yes, I was like, wait a minute. Hold it.
If you have comments, please do.
So, I just have a couple of things. One, going back to Mr. Greenwood, I believe, comments and you, Commissioner Robertson. Mr. Greenwood asked to be sure that there was a consultation going on about the stormwater management, I have to assume, between staff and the rules that we have, and this conversation has taken place and will continue to take place. Okay, great, thank you, um, to do that. Also, I want to go to phasing. Um, I mentioned at the SPRC the importance of, um, communicating frequently with the neighbors about the various, what's going on with the construction, what to expect. To Mr. Colina's question, what is the plan for, whoops, what is the plan for, um, the trucks and where do they go? And, uh, one point that I would like to make that I have seen in too many times, sadly, and hopefully not with this project since you've been very responsive, um, the construction liaison to make sure that this person is fully aware of the process and so that the neighbors aren't, um, left wondering why they don't know what's going on or not to be depicted to the construction liaison as just complainers or whatever. Too often, the folks who are on the ground with a project have never heard anything about this, and the communication is, is just not as intensive as it has been here. So I would strongly ask and recommend that you make sure that those things are highly communicated. Should, should something that you communicate to the neighbors have to change, there needs to be immediate communication to them so that they understand what change is. And again, if there's something that's going on, I would hope that you would change it. Going back to the, uh, circulation out of the triplexes, should it be more than seven cars in peak travel, would you then, I mean, if there's a ton of traffic that happens to generate and go into the neighborhood, I would assume that somebody would, in collaboration with the community, figure out maybe some other alternatives, or if it turns out to be a problem, as with anything, um, in this development, that if it turns out to be a problem, there can be some, you know, constructor conversation going on, because communication really leads to a lot of, um, you know, goodwill and avoids a lot of problems down the road. So those would be some things that I would add. Thank you.
Um, regarding the, where the construction traffic's going to go, we really don't have all those details yet. I would imagine that there would be, uh, construction vehicles coming from Fairfax Drive, but I can't at this point in time tell you for sure that there will be no construction traffic to the south. I don't want to misspeak. What I can tell you is we work out those details with staff, and we'll have a maintenance of traffic plan. We do have a pre-construction meeting. We do have a community liaison. I understand your comments about making sure that that community liaison understands their role, that they're just not a name and a number, uh, but they're supposed to be that contact for, uh, uh, kind of constructive collaboration, uh, and, and information sharing, uh, whether it be through that liaison or some other manner. Um, regarding the traffic question, you know, once we build the roads, the roads are the roads, and those triplexes only have those Wakefield and Woodrow in and out, but they have Wakefield and Woodrow in and out. And so even if it was 10, I would argue, even if it was 20 vehicles coming in and out of there in the morning, that's not excessive. Now, if there's an issue about, you know, cars are going too fast, then I'm sure, then that could be brought up with those neighbors, but, uh, I really think the project has been successful in keeping, once again, that multifamily traffic on Fairfax and just regular, kind of, you know, you could almost think of it as 30 single-family residences, um, using those same roads as the neighbors.
Will the, uh, triplexes have an HOA, are they planning to organize one?
Uh, that is the intent, yes.
Okay, thank you. So there is an organization that could be, could address concerns. Do we have any further questions on, um, sustainability? Um, actually, I do want to look to follow up on the stormwater issue. Because we're moving more and more toward having overland relief because of the unpredictability of storms coming through, how does the overland relief? of storms coming through, how does the overland relief work along, that would presumably be along the western edge of the property? And how would that affect the triplexes? Because they're the ones who'd be closest to it.
Correct. So it does, that we'll call it that path there between the triplexes and the property line. And so really, it's going to act like a large swell in that overland relief period, if that comes up. So basically, that whole, it's a 26 foot wide fire lane, that's why it's wider as it is. So that's really where that water is going to collect. And if you look, if you get into the details, the driveways are actually a little steeper than, you know, than normal to really kind of lift the back of that triplex, that garage up. So you really kind of have almost a channel in that backyard or that back from the unit to the property line. And in the plan, we've done sections of the 100-year storm and 500-year storm to show how the water stays in that, that channel we'll call it, that overland relief path. If everything uphill clogs and the water comes down, 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 you can see it stays in that channel.
And it flows from south to north toward Fairfax Drive?
No, it flows, sorry, Fairfax Drive down.
It goes south.
Yes.
And where, where does it then exit the property? What happens to it when it leaves?
Like it does today. So it's really kind of holding the same pattern actually that happens today because the building's at the same place that the existing building is. So it's really that same area that's really going to hold that, that same water path down through that, we'll call it channel or that section through there that keeps kind of going south as it does today.
Okay. Okay, so that's been thought through. Okay, thank you. Let's see, I've gone through stormwater, overland relief, resident access to the units. Does anybody have any comments on pedestrian and bicycle experience? We've been talking about phasing, phasing, that's, and that is construction we've touched upon. Are you planning to build everything all at once or is it one building first and then others? How's that going to work?
The building one has a significantly longer construction duration than that of the triplexes. So ideally, we have all of the buildings deliver together into a built environment. We have incorporated a phasing plan into the 4.1 submission to allow for us to separate if needed and in a logical way, but the intent is to go all at once.
Okay, great, thank you. Affordable housing, does anybody have questions about that? Yeah, Commissioner Bagley.
So just to clarify, it, this is, the base contribution is what that you will be doing?
It is.
Commissioner, I can answer that question if you want.
Thank you.
It's, it's $1.78 million approximately.
And, and, and I know I sat through some of these meetings, and why are we content with a cash contribution versus onsite affordable in that area?
So speaking on behalf of, for staff, under state code, developer has an option to, to, to do three different things, essentially provide a cash contribution, do onsite units or offsite units nearby. So those are, those are three different options. Staff report goes into a little bit more detail about, you know, the value of each of those buckets, each of those tranches. But again, they do have an option to do each of those and we, we can't require that they fulfill it any one of those ways. It's up to them.
And I understand this, and this is an ongoing conversation that we've had where this is an expensive place to live, we all know that. And a lot of people might want to live in that area, but might just be closed out because they can't afford that. It's just disappointing to see another project come through here where we don't have affordable units onsite, which is probably far more valuable for addressing the shortage of these than just the cash. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to align myself with Commissioner Bagley on this. We, the Boston Macy's site has onsite affordable housing units. So, you know, this is walking distance to the subway, walking distance to supermarkets. Boston is underserved for affordable units and this is something that we as a commission have been emphasizing for quite a long time now, the desirability of, of affordable units, especially in the metro corridors. Yes, Commissioner Guevara.
I just want to associate myself with those comments as well, Commissioner Bagley's comments. I think it's really important to have at least one or two. I mean, we've gone through SPRCs and it's sometimes we're just begging for at least one onsite because it's just so important to allow residents to be in these desirable areas. Often, it's either just a cash contribution or for everyone to be just put in South Arlington as opposed to have an ability to live in North Arlington and also, you know, partake in the benefits that are in the other side. So I really hope you do consider expanding that option and not just doing a cash contribution because I think it would really go a long way to helping underserved community members in Arlington.
Commissioner Patel.
When Commissioner Bagley, thank you, Commissioner Bagley for, for making the comment because of course this is a place where we have come several times and, and asked developers to change the culture of development here in Arlington. And just because we can do a cash contribution doesn't mean that that is enough. And so I will go on record with my colleagues here and say, it's not enough. Whenever we have new development, come on, you know, just because the code says that you have these options, a cash contribution shouldn't be the one that we pick particularly in a locality like Arlington where affordability is, you know, we, we are not affordable on many different, in many different ways. And so, you know, thinking about the families that will live here, hoping that they will be, that they will bring and have children at these, at these units, you know, we are not affordable in childcare, we are not affordable in housing, we don't make it affordable for people to live here. And so I think that this needs to be something where it's all hands on deck. We, as a commission, have asked developers time and time again, including as, as Commissioner Lintelme has indicated, the Macy's-Boston site, we were not pleased with that one. They did not have enough affordable housing there. The Americana Hotel, even though there was something that we were going to be doing, you know, it was a unique situation, we were not pleased there either. And so again, here is a missed opportunity where we could have provided affordability in a place that is in the heart of an area that has really wonderful public transportation, wonderful amenities, and it has the other side of it, which is the residential component. So, you know, this is a really big missed opportunity and I think it saddens me that we continue to have to keep having this conversation. And I'm hoping that at some point we'll be able to say, wow, we are really reaching a tipping point where community culture is changing on the development front and more and more affordable units are coming into, coming online. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Steinberger.
I'd like to align myself with the comments that have been made by Commissioners Bagley, Guevara, and Patel. I think further, it shouldn't have to be in, from my perspective, it's not an all or one, and I don't think we're going to get to the, the change we're looking to see overnight. But I think that the transition of saying, okay, we're going to do part of a cash contribution and we're going to do a couple units onsite, I think that moves us in the direction that I can be very kind of satisfied in if we're heading in that direction. And I think we are starting to see that with more developers and I think that's really, as a commission, we're setting that standard that that's what we want to see. And if we sound like a broken record, we kind of are. And until there's meaningful change with the developers that are coming before us, you're going to continue to hear it. So we can harp on this every time or you guys can just start doing it. And I think that, you know, we're, we're not saying that cash contributions are not acceptable off the table, but I think there needs to be a balance where, you know, as Commissioner Lintelme said, this is a very accessible, desirable place to live where you can, you know, work and, you know, get your shopping needs made and do everything without a car and be on the metro. And we need to be emphasizing that those are places that we want to see affordable units. So, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Striner.
You probably know what I'm going to say, but I'd like to associate myself with the comments of, of all my other commissioners who have spoken on this issue. Arlington prides itself on being a diverse, inclusive community and it takes everybody to make that happen. And until we are inclusive in every corner of Arlington, you know, we're falling short of that vision. So I think it's important that we have those units in, in these buildings onsite so they can, they're, they're able to access all of the amenities that this county provides, you know, particularly on this, on their metro corridors.
Yes, Commissioner Bagley.
Yeah, just as a follow-up, there were three of us that abstained for the Boston Macy's project because of the cash contribution. And I represented the planning commission that day when it came in front of the county board. And Mr. Dorsey proceeded to say that when those options were put on the table, the intent was never to just take the cash because it was the easiest one. And really went into quite a good statement and probably something that you should go and listen to. And in the end, they commiserated and by and large, at the end, they came through and decided no cash and they threw in another eight units. So it is a possible thing. I really do hope you go back and think about it and do the right thing. Thank you.
Any further comments on this? Okay, we've pretty much gone through our discussion items. Are there any other items that we have missed or anything anyone else would like to raise? Yes, Commissioner Striner.
Yeah, one comment on the, on the triplexes. Are they ADA accessible on the upper units in those triplex buildings?
I don't think so. No, I don't believe the upper units are, but we will meet any ADA accessibility requirements for the buildings.
In the other building?
In, and, and any that may apply to the triplexes.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, further comments? Okay, what I do want to raise is that this, of all the projects we've had, this is probably one that is most improved from the first iteration to what has come before us now. So I, I do want to acknowledge that. This applicant has made tremendous changes in response to the, the SPRCs and to the community, to staff's requests. So, you know, I'm, you know, I would not have been able to vote for this as it came in the door at first, but I am able to do so now, should have motion, when the motion is made, but I do acknowledge that there have been tremendous changes on this over a number of meetings. Yes, Commissioner Sarly.
I would just associate myself with that sentiment. I think, you know, I'm really excited that you took the time, you stepped back, you regrouped, you invested, and you improved the project. So thank you.
With that, I guess I will ask for a motion. Commissioner Patel, are you willing to make one?
I am, thank you very much. So I will start with the vacation. The planning commission finds that the ordinances of vacation to vacate, one, a portion of the existing easement for public utility purposes, and two, the existing fire lane easements both on property belonging to Boston Hotel Associates and Snell Arlington LLC, known as 4600 and 4610 Fairfax Drive, RPC numbers 12-053-055 and -056 with conditions, and three, a portion of the existing public street and utilities, utilities purposes on property belonging to Snell Arlington Center LLC and Outparcel B LLC, known as 4600 Fairfax Drive, RPC numbers 12-053-055 and -023 with conditions, are substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan of Arlington County, Virginia.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sarly seconds. Do we have any, do you speak, wish to speak to the motion? Does anybody have any comments on that? If not, let's then proceed to a vote. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Guevara?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarly?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much to the applicant, to the people.
Oh, we still have the motion.
Oh, right, right, there's one more motion. Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. Commissioner Patel, you have a second motion to bring before us.
Yes, thank you. I move that the planning commission recommend the county board adopt the attached site plan amendment ordinance for SPLN 21-00008, SP number 57, to expand the site area by approximately 4,635 square feet and to construct up to 450 multifamily residential dwelling units located at 4600 and 4610 Fairfax Drive, RPC number 14-053, 05, uh, -023-055 and -056 with modifications of zoning ordinance requirements, including additional density, reduced parking and loading requirements, density exclusions, and other modifications as necessary to achieve the proposed development plan.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Sarly, again, thank you. Anybody wish to speak to this? Do we have any comments?
I would, I have, I would like to speak to this. I will just say that I too appreciate the remarkable improvements that the applicant has made to this particular site. But, you know, standing on the principle that Commissioner Bagley has previously articulated for how we voted in other matters, I will be abstaining on the issue of affordable housing, onsite affordable housing.
Thank you. And yes, Commissioner Steinberger.
I'm having an internal debate on how I want to vote on this. I am inclined to support it, given the vast improvements that have been made and acknowledged, and I am appreciative of the work you've done and the, to the feedback you've received, with the understanding, I will personally say that I think you have heard what we have said as a commission, you are going to take a look at what the affordable units are and that maybe there will be some changes that are made and presented when it comes to county board in a couple of weeks. So with that in mind, I will support, I'm prepared to support the project based on that. Ambitious hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments? Okay, we're ready for the, oh, no, okay. Start with the vote, Commissioner Bagley.
Abstain.
Abstain. Commissioner Guevara?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger, aye. Commissioner Sarly?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Abstain.
And I will vote aye as well. It passes five, five to zero with three abstentions. That, it concludes that for the evening for this. Thank you to the applicant and to the community and to staff for this. Madam Clerk, what is our next item?
Our last item for the evening is number 6, ZO8-2023-09. This is an ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify portions of the Arlington County zoning ordinance. We have Brett Wallace, our planning staff, to present this item this evening. If we could give him a few moments to set up, please.
Okay.
Okay, good evening. My name is Brett Wallace, I'm with the planning staff. I'm also joined by my colleague Chris Kreider behind me and other staff from Planning and DES Transportation and Real Estate who are joining me on the call today. I'm here to present the zoning ordinance text amendments for the Future of Outdoor Dining Study, or the Food Study. In terms of the recommended framework, there are three key elements, the first being adoption of the zoning ordinance text amendments, which is subject of the PC meeting this evening, which will be permitting outdoor seating in public spaces by administrative review and allowing the ability of the county board to modify parking requirements for seats located on required private parking spaces, and other amendments to further the study goals and recommendations. And then item number two is the Encroachment Ordinance and Outdoor Cafe License. This is a new chapter of the county code. It's an administrative process and requirements for outdoor cafe license application and a fee process. This is a separate item, a separate staff report. The recommendations are going to be considered with the food study recommendations at the July county board meeting. So items one and two will be subjects of the July board meeting. Item number three is the county's Outdoor Cafe Guidelines, which is a, last updated in 2013. This is an in 2013. This is an administrative document that will include references and resources for restaurants going forward, including information on the application and permitting process. And looking at the study schedule, staff launched the study last fall when the county manager removed the emergency order. We started in phase one in the fall where we were doing information gathering on the temporary outdoor seating areas, or TOSSAs. We also were researching other communities and counties across the nation. We conducted some community engagement. We received over 2,000 responses in the fall, and we hosted a couple of virtual roundtable events. We then moved into the winter, spring timeframe to phase two. We continued to do information gathering to take what findings would help inform the recommendations that you'll hear this evening. And then we are now currently in phase three of the study. We've been busy meeting with relevant commissions. Last month in June, the county board authorized advertisement of tonight's public hearing and the county board meeting next week. We're here with you this evening. And then we're moving into August, which will be beginning the initial application period with restaurants and doing consultations with restaurants. And just noting that on August 15th, the temporary outdoor seating area TOSA program will be ending, and the new regulations will be in effect. Just in terms of the food study, primary purpose and goals noted, he was really looking at the temporary outdoor seating areas or the TOSA program to see what elements could fit into a more permanent outdoor seating program, also looking at how it could inform other changes to current regulations for how we manage outdoor cafes, and then creating a clear pathway forward for current TOSA permit holders that are looking to transition their TOSSAs into more permanent outdoor cafes. So just a quick overview on the TOSA program. They were established in 2020 to help restaurants when businesses could not serve patrons indoors. So this was developed quickly as part of the pandemic, and staff worked to develop flexible design and operational guidelines. We created an online submission process with an interdepartmental staff team. The TOSSAs were approved by the county manager through the continuity of governance ordinance. Currently, we have approximately 100 TOSSAs that are still in operation today, both public and private property. And again, those TOSSAs will expire on August the 15th. In terms of some of the engagement, what we heard related to the TOSSAs was general support for local businesses during the pandemic, enjoyment for outdoor dining, providing safe, accessible pedestrian circulation. We heard support for reduced parking, for expanding outdoor dining options, and the need to streamline the process. So in terms of our proposed summary of proposed zoning amendments before you this evening, this table here summarizes the existing and proposed processes. So currently, there are three types of outdoor cafes that we're recommending amendments to, the first being private property that are not unencumbered by public easements. Currently today, those outdoor cafes on private property can be reviewed administratively by right by the zoning administrator. We are looking to continue that practice. So again, allow outdoor cafes on private property to be reviewed administratively. The second type is outdoor cafes and public rights away or easement areas. Currently, those outdoor cafes are approved by the county board by use permit. Staff is recommending to move those also into an administrative approval pathway process. That would include utility and street easements, but it would exclude the travelway or parking space. And then finally, the third type is outdoor cafes that are located within privately owned public spaces, or POPs. Currently, those are reviewed by the county board by use permit, and we would look to continue that practice going forward. So again, a summary of the proposed zoning amendments that I just spoke to, private property, again, the use of zoning ordinance required parking spaces for outdoor cafes when the use standards are met, the permission of fixtures and furnishings to be affixed to the ground, sound and entertainment not to be permitted when adjacent to R and R A districts, and the requirement for lighting to be arranged and/or hooded and confined within the outdoor cafe area. On public property, there will be a requirement for an outdoor cafe license as part of the new chapter 70 of the county code, and there's a new clear sidewalk dimension of six feet unless otherwise greater distance that's approved on a site plan. And then for the privately owned public spaces, again, requiring a use permit approval by the county board in addition to requiring an outdoor cafe license. Staff is also recommending amendments to articles 6, 7, and 8 to the use tables, including editorial changes to reflect the proposed changes for the approval process. Staff is also recommending changes to article 14 for parking, including additional editorial changes to resolve some regulatory conflicts with allowing outdoor cafes in off-street parking spaces, and again, the requirement for a use permit approval for those situations. And then finally, for article 18, staff is recommending a new definition for public space that's privately owned, and this new definition is to distinguish the POPs from other public easement areas such as sidewalks. And again, a requirement for a use permit approval. Just a quick summary on the encroachment ordinance and the outdoor cafe license, the new county code, chapter 70, again, subject to another staff report being led by the DES Real Estate Bureau. Again, this will be a county license for the private outdoor cafe use of any public space. This provides an administrative process for the cafe application with an annual approval and renewal. There will be an application fee plus an annual license fee that's typically based on the cafe's square footage, and the fees will be determined with the fiscal year '25 budget, which is anticipated to be effective July of 2024. And the license would be in addition to any requirements for outdoor cafes under the zoning ordinance. So staff has been busy over the past month and a half, meeting with relevant commissions, the zoning committee twice, the Chamber of Commerce, economic development, pedestrian advisory. I mentioned that we met with the county board for the request to advertise in June. We met with Park and Recreation Commission. We most recently met with the Transportation Commission just last week, and just noting that they voted seven to two to defer adoption of the proposed zoning amendments. We're here with you this evening for the zoning amendments, and again, we'll be meeting with the county board for action on July 15th for both the zoning amendments and the new chapter of the county code. So following adoption, we've been busy thinking about implementation. So staff will be developing the infrastructure and framework that is needed to process and review and receive applications for outdoor cafes. Staff is looking to develop this framework by October 16th, which is approximately 90 days after adoption of the zoning ordinance amendments. And again, staff will be working with applicants to prepare submissions. Some of the materials to be completed may include updates to the outdoor cafe design guidelines that I mentioned earlier, which is an administrative document, and generating step-by-step guides, how-to videos, FAQs, and also making any additional updates to applicable web pages. In terms of engagement and communications going forward, we've outlined that in this table here, showing the timing on the left. So after the county board meeting in July, we'll be reaching out to restaurants and TOSA holders with a summary of what actions the county board takes in July, informing them that there is nothing they need to do before August the 15th. We will be sharing a point of contact and a place for questions and answers. In August, around time of the continuity of governance expiration, I will be providing additional details on the October 16th go-live date with confirming details of their existing TOSSAs, again, completing the design guidelines document, information on how to submit questions and request consultations with staff. We're also developing checklists and charts of TOSSAs and any necessary approvals in terms of licenses and permits. And then in September, we'll be providing specific information that restaurants need before making applications, including all the info shared via email in August in a hard copy format, and details on how to apply, again, with FAQs and flow charts and helpful videos. And then October 16th and on is reviewing of applications. So just closing with the county manager recommendations, I'm not going to read all this text. County manager is recommending the proposed amendments, articles 6, 7, 8, 12, 14, and 18 of the zoning ordinance to permit outdoor cafes to reflect proposed changes for the approval process and public rights away by administrative review and to permit outdoor cafes located in private parking spaces by use permit. And then the second recommendation is authorize the county manager to direct staff to establish by October 16th the administrative process and infrastructure necessary to operationalize the future receipt review and processing of applications for outdoor cafes in accordance with the recommended zoning amendments and the new chapter of the county code. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Do we have any public speakers, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do. We have Kate Bates on the line.
Excuse me. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Kate Bates, president. My apologies. I'm Kate Bates, president and CEO of the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the chamber in support of the item. Temporary outdoor seating areas have been a marquee success for both our local restaurants and our community. They provided a key lifeline for many of our restaurants to stay in business during the pandemic. The TOSSAs continue to provide much-needed additional revenue to our restaurants as they face new post-pandemic challenges, including rising food costs, inflation, and a workforce shortage. The success of the TOSA program over the last few years makes a compelling case for the vast majority of TOSSAs to become permanent. The chamber has advocated for several years in favor of a path that would allow operators to apply to make their TOSSAs permanent, allowing them to invest in these spaces and to plan long-term with outdoor dining as a core part of the business model in a way it was not before 2020. The chamber supports this package of amendments to the code, and we find the regulations to be reasonable, allowing most operators to keep their TOSSAs through an administrative process. We appreciate all of the work by staff up to this point and emphasize the need for staff to prioritize the communications as outlined with restaurants as the August 15th date approaches and beyond. We appreciate that the intention is to not cause a lapse for those with existing TOSSAs that can be administratively approved, but the lapse from August to October is likely to raise many questions and confusion with the impacted restaurants. The chamber is looking forward to continued partnership with the county to assist with outreach and communications to restaurants in the coming weeks. We ask that the commission votes to recommend these amendments for adoption by the county board this month. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Do we have any commissions on the line, Madam Clerk?
No, she was the only one with Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, thank you. This was before the Transportation Commission last week, and as Mr. Wallace indicated, it was, the vote was to defer seven to two. I did circulate earlier Chair Slatt's concerns that the Transportation Commission had and why they voted to defer. Just to reiterate, the six-foot clear width, one-size-fits-all approach for non-site plan and older site plans, it was a concern. And the question is, why do some buildings need eight-foot sidewalks, others need 15-foot sidewalks, if they can all have to be squished down to six feet under clear, under, clear width done administratively? All the TOSSAs in public space are taken from the sidewalk. None are from taking public parking spaces, which gives priority again to cars over pedestrians. The concern also is that administrative approval will of course mean more TOSSAs. That's the goal, but that will also need more enforcement, but there's no provision for improved enforcement on the proposal. That is the Transportation Commission report. Do we have a ZOCO report?
Yes, I did circulate a very brief outline. I think, if I may characterize the ZOCO meetings, we are generally in support of the continuing TOSA and converting them to food, I think is the acronym that we're using. But I think the discussion centered around implementation and policing and the aspect of the, you know, the details, the proverbial devil in the detail situation, which aligns quite well with the Transportation Commission's concerns. And I think that's about it.
Okay, and we do have topics of conversation, as you've listed there. I will note also that the Pedestrian Advisory Committee and the, seconded, I think, by the Bicycle Advisory Committee, has weighed in, and that was influential with the Transportation Commission. That had also been circulated. With that, it's before the commission. Comments, questions for staff? Steiner and then Sarley?
Striner.
Striner.
So I remember, we actually met about this in one of the, an earlier meeting last month, and there was, there were a couple of ideas that we were floating around. I know we talked about dark skies and sort of preventing the light pollution to go by nearby residential places. Was that addressed in any significant way here, or?
Yes, we are including a new provision in the zoning ordinance related to light pollution, including the requirement for the lights to be arranged or hooded-
Okay.
-to not allow light pollution above the outdoor cafe area.
Okay, great. And then, okay, yes. So in line 156 of the sample text, it references that, and I mentioned this last time too, how in, only in industrial districts, in M districts, are there, are these places allowed to be enclosed for any portion of the year. It's up to 10 months in the language. And my question is the same as it was back then, that why does this only apply to industrial districts and not any, any restaurant here in Arlington? Like, why not open that permitting process up to all districts in Arlington that have restaurants in this outdoor dining experience?
Yes, thank you. That's something I believe we can take back and formulate a response for, for the county board report. I apologize, that was not included in the staff report that was updated last week-
Okay, yeah.
-PC distribution.
Excuse me, Brett. Nick is on the line, available to speak if you need him to. Nick?
Madam Clerk, thanks so much. Commissioner Striner, I do recall you mentioning that during our second ZOCO meeting, and per Mr. Wallace's feedback, we'd be happy to add some further context to the staff report that didn't make it into the version that was in your packet tonight. That being said, the, the area that you've identified in the draft text that's in our current zoning ordinance was added in back in 1994 during a time when, at that time, outdoor cafes were only permitted to be utilized seasonally by restaurants. And so the, the outdoor cafe had to be pulled in and broken down a minimum of one season out of the year to, to fully embody that accessory nature. And I'll simply kind of reiterate and reframe some of the commentary that we had at ZOCO for, perhaps for members of the public and members of the commission that weren't in attendance with us at, at the June ZOCO meeting, how these are in accessory use. And I think staff appreciates the notion and the potential for an outdoor cafe to, to have some of that, some additional enclosure during periods of inclement weather. That being said, there is some creep and there could be the potential for even well-meaning restaurateurs in an enclosure, in an enclosure setting to really be creating an additional permanent structure and, and in addition, that's not necessarily accessory to the use and, and is, it would be encroaching into a required setback. So that's, that's sort of where we are and why we're recommending that we maintain the, the additional, the existing conditions that require the outdoor seating area to remain accessory and to not be enclosed.
Right, yeah. No, I agree with that concern. I think that's very legitimate, that, that sort of creep could occur. In the language, though, it does say that in M districts, they may be enclosed up to 10 months a year. So it is, even in- So it is, even in the existing language, it is a temporary sort of designation. So I think if that were just applied to all districts, I think that, to me, makes more logical sense. Because if, I think I mentioned this last time too, is that when you go across the river into DC, they have all these nice, warm, closed and heated restaurants you can go to in the winter, and then, you know, I don't want to leave everybody out in the cold here in Arlington when they try and go out to eat. But that's, that's, that was sort of my logic behind that. And I think, I think the temporary nature of it is important, and it's definitely worth emphasizing in the language of the, of the regulations here.
Commissioner Sarley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a clarifying question on the transition from TOSA to food. I know that we had an August 15th sort of drop dead deadline. So what happens between August 15th and October 16th for a restaurant that wants to keep the TOSA in place? Do we have a temporary permitting system? How are we going to address that?
Yeah, so we're calling the period between August 15th and October 16th as the initial application period, where we'll be working with restaurants to get in necessary applications. Not everyone is alike. They're all different and have different requirements, whether they had been approved by a use permit or a site plan. And so we'll be working with them very closely during that period to determine what kind of permits they need and understanding what their intention is, if, if they just want to maintain their TOSA, or, you know, how could they do that? Could they, would they need to apply for another certificate of occupancy, for example? And so we'd have to work with them to review that through our Inspection Services Division to see if that's acceptable in terms of the occupancy, just as an example.
And, and, yes, and I would also add that as long as they're actively pursuing an application, we are not going to be enforcing their current TOSA. So the idea of October 16th is also allowing them to wind down through the outdoor cafe season. So as long as they're actively working with us, we were not, you know, post-August 15th, we are not going to actively require them, unless there's a complaint or a concern, you know, absolutely. But if they've got 30 seats, but they're now going to be applying for 20, we're going to work with them to do that and, and through, through the season.
Excuse me, sir. Could you identify yourself for the public and our new Commissioners?
I'm sorry?
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. My name is Chris Kreider. I'm the supervisor of the Urban Design Section in the Planning Division.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thanks. Just so, just so I understand this, I'm still a little bit confused. So as of August 15th, any sort of TOSA restaurant that wants to keep their outdoor facilities going, they will have to have contacted you and be on a list sort of where you're talking to them?
By October 16th, they need to contact us.
But my understanding that COGO expires on August 15th.
Mm-hmm.
So there's this no man's land between August 15th and October 16th, where we're not legal to have that space, and COGO has now expired. So what happens then is, do you see what I'm saying? There's like a lacuna on the...
Well, understand too that the, the restaurants are going to need time to prepare their applications. They're going to need time to submit their work, and they're going to need time to understand what the requirements are. So what we're trying to do is to provide them the resources as they can, as they start to consider their options, because some of them may go back to their prior certificate of occupancy. Some may just walk away from the TOSA, and others may choose to come up with a different layout. So while the zoning ordinance amendments are in effect, they can effectively move forward. But we're also saying that it's important to work with us so that you are compliant, because once you enter into the building permit system, Permit Arlington, you need to have the accurate documentation. And, and so we, we think that there's going to be some orientation time for many restaurants, and we want to work very closely with them to do that. But if they meet all of the requirements and they're ready, as, as we've been approving outdoor cafes in the past, so there is a process in place, it's just a matter of these additional regulations. But the process already exists to apply for an outdoor cafe.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to follow up on that, because I have exactly the same question as Commissioner Sarley. My concern isn't so much the county, because I understand you wouldn't move to enforce, because that would be terrible to do, to put people in between a rock and a hard place. I'm more concerned that a landlord is saying, well, you're no longer compliant with the terms of your lease because this violates the county's, county, you know, the county statutes. Or a neighbor says, aha, gotcha now, I've never liked you there, I don't like this, this is now illegal, you know, you don't, you're not complying, and somehow moved to enforce it outside of the county's enforcement mechanisms. So that, and I'm wondering whether insurance companies would come in and say, whoa, this isn't insurable because it's violating the law. You know, these are the things that are outside of the county's control that I, I wonder about. I don't know if we have answers to that, whether the county attorneys looked at this at all, but these are concerns I have for the gap period, because they're not in compliance, because they can't be in compliance. You know, we've sort of created, as Commissioner Sarley mentioned, we have this no man's land time. And my concern is that into being a Wild West to a certain extent. Now, I'm raising things that may very well not happen, but I'm, you know, I, I also am a lawyer, so I get trained in this type of what-ifs. So I think it's something we should at least be thinking about and trying to research and see what could happen if this, this occurs. That said, I have another couple of clarifying questions also. For the barring light and sound for the private, when private property backs up on an R or RA zones, which I fully support, I think that's a very good modification, why don't we have that same ban for when it's on sidewalks that are up against R or RA districts or next to R or RA districts? Because I can see two restaurants right now that could potentially, one has outside seating right up against an R zone in the sidewalk, public sidewalks. And not, now, they don't pipe music out, but someone in that situation shouldn't be able to if they can't do it on private property. I, is this a gap here, or am I missing something?
Yeah, you're correct in that we're only considering not permitting the sound or audio adjacent to an R or RA district. We had not considered other R districts.
Well, but also, it's for public, it's, my concern about public property, you know, the sidewalks, because we're borrowing it for private property, but we're not borrowing it for, on sidewalks. That was my reading of this, and if I'm wrong, certainly let me know. But I think it's a gap there. Further questions, comments? I guess if nobody has anything further to add or talk about, Commissioner Sarley, do you have motions? Do we have any other comments? You know, we've raised a number of topics here, but nobody seems to be, have any further concerns on them.
Why don't I run down the list? Is that all right with you?
Yes, certainly do.
I'll just, I'll just put a few questions that I put out to see if that triggers anything with the Commission, and then we'll move to motions. One of the things that we wanted to perhaps think about, and as we go forward, maybe this is not something that will happen tonight, is unintended consequences. What are possible side effects? And again, I guess the TOSA is good, because we've had some experience with it, so we have a sort of a meter, so maybe that's not a concern. The other issue then is, as I understand it, this is essentially complaint-based enforcement? Is that a fair, so is that enough? You know, do my fellow Commissioners believe that that's enough? Do we need to have, you know, think of a possible increases to the enforcement aspect? The other thing was the notion of guidelines, you know, are those being developed? And I'm asking staff here. And when will we be able to see them? Or did I miss them?
I can address the, the second item on enforcement first, and then I'll address the guidelines. So you're correct, cases can be opened with our zoning enforcement staff to initiate inspections to determine whether a cafe is adhering to the approved layout or the certificate of occupancy. We currently have two methods to report the appearance of code violations. One is by email, and then another is to the zoning division phone line, our counter services staff. And that, they can be used to answer questions on whether there's an active case for a particular address, for example. And then second, on the design guidelines I mentioned earlier, is an administrative document. We're currently working on it to update it, to reflect the proposed approval process that we presented tonight. We expect that that should be complete by August the 15th, so it's in place so that restaurants post-August 15th can start using those to develop their applications and, you know, make their determinations.
Great.
One thing I'd also add about the, the sort of keeping up with the TOSA's, one thing that we appreciate with the outdoor cafe ordinance that's being written is there's an annual review. So they have to maintain that, that outdoor cafe license, and that gives us the opportunity to inspect, and all of these cafes will be inspected before they, they get their certificate of occupancy. So that happens on the front end. But annually, there, for those that are in the right of way, they will have to document that they're maintaining their current design, their current encroachment into that public space, and they'll be paying an annual fee to do so.
And then the, the last sort of point that we sort of thought up was the notion of revisiting this as a, as a Commission and staff. You know, should we establish some sort of a, not a sunset, but you know, I mean, a periodic check-in to see what staff's hearing, to see what the community's hearing, you know, I don't know, three years, four years? Don't want to add too much work to staff, but, you know, just so that we keep tabs and we're continuing to improve, you know, the guidelines and the clarity of the, of the document.
Yes, Commissioner Guevara.
Hi, thank you, Chair. So I have a question, what you just said about they would have to reapply every year, do you go out to the site when they reapply, or is it just sort of, hey, them sort of giving their word that yes, they are following protocol? And the reason I'm asking is based on our previous meetings, I was really concerned about ADA compliance and making sure that restaurants are abiding by some of the restrictions.
Yeah, you're speaking about the outdoor cafe license. There will be an annual renewal of the license. At that time, we could conduct inspections with our zoning staff, so that's something that we're considering doing on an annual basis, and even periodically throughout the outdoor dining season to check on some of these outdoor cafes.
But right now, you don't have a set amount of proposed, let's say, inspections you're going to be conducting. Right now, it's just complaint-based, but you're not going to be proactively sort of, or at least there's no exact plan at the moment, or there is?
There are inspections required for the building permit and the certificate of occupancy, and so that will be, need to occur before the license is granted. So there will be inspections for those two permit types.
Okay, I was just referring more after they've received a permit, and are they continuing to remain compliant?
So after they receive a permit, it would be mostly complaint-based, or if we're doing periodic inspections internally, like I said, if we go out during the outdoor cafe dining season and just check on some of these that we may know may be bad actors, for example, that's something we could consider do, doing throughout the year.
Okay, I would encourage for there to be some sort of definitive plan. I think that would make it us more comfortable, at least make me more comfortable with this idea. But overall, I do think it's really important to support our business community. I appreciate Ms. Bates's comments on how Chamber of Commerce thinks that this is going to be something that's really good for our businesses. But I do think, you know, at the same time, we need to keep in mind how enforcement and compliance to this is really important. So I would encourage you to develop an actual plan.
Yes, Commissioner Steinberger.
I just, I'm struggling with this a little bit, because I do think that the concerns that were raised in Commissioner Slatt's kind of report from the Transportation Commission, it, it does seem like there are maybe some things about this plan that have not been fully hashed out, and I think Commissioner Guevara, with regards to enforcement, sort of addressed some of those. I like this as a concept, I'm just not sure that I'm there yet with some of the considerations that have been raised, and I do think there are some valid concerns. I mean, one of the items that Commissioner Slatt raised specifically was with regards to sort of some of the great variation in sidewalk widths, and if we can sort of all of a sudden go to a much narrower sidewalk width, you know, why are we having some of these? There's not a standardization there. And, and I, I think that's a reasonable question. So I don't know if you want to speak to that, I just, I'm, I don't, I haven't decided how I'm going to vote on this, I guess I have to soon, and ultimately, I didn't want to vote or not vote in a way and then not have context to how I'm going to ultimately vote. So this is the context I'm giving you, which is, I'm struggling right now. Thank you.
I can speak to the clear sidewalk, and it's noted on, in the summary from the Transportation Commission on page 22 of the staff report as well, but the, the six-foot clear sidewalk is a minimum dimension that's recommended in the MTP pedestrian element in the high-density areas. It's also a minimum distance requirement that's been in place for quite some time now in the, in the current design guidelines. That was last updated 10 years ago. So it is a minimum of where we start from, and when we're considering some of these by-right projects that have not yet been redeveloped by site plan. However, the MTP also states that the sector plans and site plans may require wider sidewalks. So in those cases, applicants can't simply just reduce it down to six, they would have to get a site plan amendment or a use permit amendment and present justification for why they want to reduce down to six when maybe it was approved for eight or 10.
I, I was one of the people who voted, I was the two, within the two of the seven to two at Transportation Commission, but that was not because I disagreed with anything that was being raised by Transportation Commission. It was more because I didn't want to put our restaurants even further between a rock and a hard place. It's something that we have a deadline coming up, and we need to do something, and it has to be done. That said, I think that as an interim, you know, I will vote in favor of this, but I very, very much want us to be thinking through the various gaps, questions, things that were raised by Transportation, things that were raised by the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and not wait three or four years to go back and revise things. Let's get something in place so we can protect our restaurants, but then let's get some reasonable responses and further thought-out provisions for these, and then come back and do them again. I'm doing that with the hope that that's, I'll vote in favor with the hope that that's what will happen, because we have to do something, and I just don't want to be putting our restaurants behind the eight ball. And so I agree with Chamber of Commerce on that.
In regards to the six-foot, are you suggesting that it's too narrow, or?
Yeah, that it could be too narrow, that there are, where we've, we have in various places within sector plans required wider sidewalks, and we did it for good reason. Certainly within site plans, as you know, we have quite a number of places where we have pretty wide sidewalks. But we didn't, and we do allow even within a site plan for restaurants outside. And I'm not sure that we've always said six feet is fine for, even when they have the tables out there, that sometimes it, we did require it to be wider, and I could be wrong on that. But I'd like to get a little more information on that, see what our practice has been in, in those other areas. It's the one-size-fits-all, I get that is a default, we have to move forward, but I'd like to get a little more information on that, to know whether that is in fact valid. That's, I guess where I'm coming from on it.
Thank you, yes. I mean, as sector plans go, as you know, oftentimes they have urban design guidelines, which call for a minimum sidewalk width, but then they'll also have another dimension for a minimum clear distance width. If, if someone is coming forward with an application that is subject to those site plan conditions, that's the starting point, is, is that minimum clear distance. If it's eight, 10, or 12, that's where we start. They can, they would have to make a very strong case, and, and also, these cafes are not continuous down the block, it's in front of a storefront. So these are certainly compressed areas of six feet, but that's six feet from the grate of the tree, not from the tree. So we really think it's important that that be six feet clear of all obstructions, all railings, any interference. railings, any interference. And that takes place today, whether it's a utility structure or a signal pole, other things that we run into these six-foot clear distances on every site plan. There's always some constraints somewhere within and, and that's why oftentimes we add eight or 10 because we recognize it in these high-traffic areas. And, and so it would be, if someone's in Boston with a 20-foot, 23-foot wide sidewalk and they're coming in and suggesting a six-foot clear distance, that's completely inappropriate because it, it just doesn't work with the urban design in the space. So we would not support any change to the, the Boston guidelines in that situation. And they also have plenty of room within that 23 feet to have a very sizable café. So we feel that we've looked at these TOSA's and we've looked at cases and we feel confident that while the six feet is a minimum, it's, it's, it's really on those narrower sidewalks that we've got to allow the café to at least exist. And, and so we recognize that even a two-top is better than none. So on a narrow sidewalk, let's work with them, but the six-foot has to be.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Any other comments? Do you have anything further on the list, Commissioner Sarley? We should get into? Okay, do you have any other further questions, comments? Okay, I guess maybe now we might be ready for some motions.
Yes, I will move to the motions then. Just to double check, we have two motions, one to adopt and one to authorize. Does that cover it? Great, I will go with motion number one. And let me get my language correct. I even wrote it down. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the County Board adopt the attached ordinance, Attachment 1, to amend, reenact, and recodify Articles 6, 7, 8, 12, 14, and 18 of the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance, as shown in Attachment 2, to permit outdoor cafés in public right, right-of-way by administrative review to permit outdoor cafés to be located within private... Sorry, I lost my place here to use. Permit outdoor cafés as an accessory use to the food establishment, to permit outdoor cafés associated with the food establishment as an accessory use within privately-owned public spaces by use permit to permit fixtures and furnishings associated with outdoor cafés on private property to be affixed to the ground, to prohibit sound, audio, or visual entertainment from being piped into or played so as to be visible or audible from an outdoor café on private property when located in a side or rear yard abutting or across from an alley from an R or RA district, to permit outdoor cafés as an accessory use to a food establishment in the RA 8-18 and RA 6-15 districts, to amend 18.2 General Terms defined, to establish a new definition for public spaces that are privately owned and for other reasons required by public necessity, convenience, general warfare, and good zoning ordinance, good zoning practice.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Streiner. Did anybody want to speak to the motion? Did anybody, final comments?
Not much. I will just add that I think, you know, continuing the, the TOSA is a good thing for the restaurants and I support that aspect of it. I think the concerns of this commission hopefully are being heard by staff and that we're looking aggressively at ways to mitigate some of these concerns.
And with that, we'll take the vote. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Guevara?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Streiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Can you hear me? Aye. Aye?
And I vote aye as well. If that motion passes, one, two, three, four, seven to, seven to zero with one abstention. Do we have a second motion, Commissioner Sarley?
We do. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the County Board authorize the County Manager to direct staff to establish by October 16th, 2023, the administrative implementation, infrastructure, and framework necessary to operation, operationalize the future receipt, review, and processing of applications for outdoor cafés in accordance with the recommended Arlington County Zoning Ordinance Amendments, Attachment Number 2, and the proposed new Chapter 70 of the County Code Regarding Encroachments Into Public Spaces, subject to a separate report for the July 15th, 2023 County Board Meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Streiner? Do you, would you like to speak to your?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other further comments? Move ahead with the vote. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Guevara?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Streiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Again, it passes seven to zero with one abstention. Thank you, staff. We've completed this. Yeah, I just hope you're able to further, I'm presuming you will have a number of questions from the County Board on this. And that means we can now move on to administrative items. Correct, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, I love it.
Madam Chair, Madam Clerk?
Said it right the first time.
It's late, it's late. It's late. I'm still not used to doing this.
Yes, we have the May 31st and June 1st meeting minutes to approve, please.
Did anybody have any comments for the meeting minutes? So I ask unanimous consent to pass the, the meeting minutes as described by the clerk. Hearing no objections, it's passed. Do we have rosters this month?
Mr. Chairman, we have one roster.
Okay.
For the YMCA site.
YMCA site.
And I'm happy to put it up on the screen if you would like.
Yeah, please do that so we can take a quick look.
Let's see. Bear with me. Just as I've shared my screen. And, let's see the other page. So as I mentioned, this is for the YMCA project.
Right. I ask unanimous consent to approve the YMCA site roster. Hearing no objections, it is passed. Let's see. And do we have any reports? We already circulated, I circulated the LRPC report earlier if anybody has questions on that. The ZOCA report, you circulated that also?
Yeah, we don't have any meetings on...
July.
July and it's likely that we won't have anything in September also.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Weir is not here for the AUG and Commissioner Peterson is not here for the SBRCs, but that was sent, I think, sent around a bit earlier. Other than that, so, oh, staff report, do we have anything this month?
We have nothing this month, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing for PFRC either?
Nothing for PFRC. Yes, certainly.
Is it clear on our Planning Commission website, especially for that gentleman who wanted to speak or sign up, is it clear there that when you sign up for...
That's a good question.
Let me show you my face. It's extraordinarily clear.
Thank you, Madam Queen. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, with that, is there anything else left that we need to talk about, Madam Clerk? We've hit everything?
We will see you in September. How about that?
Right, so this concludes the Planning Commission for July. The next meeting is September 11th.
September 11th.
And so I want to thank the staff. I want to thank, of course, there's nobody else here, but thank, so bitter end, everybody who helped make this happen. Thank you, Commissioner Patel, for sticking me with this.
Thank you, Commissioner Lintomi.
You're welcome. I hope everybody has a great summer and this commission meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you so much.
Until September. Thank you. She thought I was supposed to be remote tonight, but then there was a quorum issue anyway.